I'm sorry, we had a conflict with cable access and we're just on Zoom. I'll call meeting to order and let me start with this statement into the record. Pursuant to the governor's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Chapter 30A, Paragraph 20, as well as the Select Board's emergency order dated March 16th, 2020. The zoning board of appeals will be using remote participation for this meeting. The audio of this meeting is being recorded and will be posted on the town's webpage within 24 hours in accordance with the governor's emergency action requirement of keeping the public informed of actions during this meeting. I would ask that all participants remotely attending this meeting, please state your name for identification purposes each time you speak throughout the meeting. At this time, roll call attendance vote will be taken. John Love, present. Jay Pewter.
Present.
Mark Bush.
Present.
Elizabeth Dembitzer.
Present.
Okay, thank you all here. And for those in, in the audience, thank you for your patience and forbearance during this. We've had pretty good luck in the meetings we've had so far with this method. So hopefully we'll continue. One of the things that has worked pretty well is if you are, would like to be heard, if you use the chat function and just make a note that you'd like to speak or have a question when the time comes. We found that's worked pretty well in identifying people, making sure everybody is represented as, as they should be. So we'll leave that there and we'll try and keep an eye on that. I think the first order of business is the approval of our minutes from the May 20th, 2020 meeting. Does anybody have, within the board, have commentary on that or corrections that need to be made?
No, read them and all said.
I as well read them and was all set, although I can't find them. I was just going to read into, it was the May 20th meeting minutes, right?
May 20th.
Yeah, no, okay, no, I read them and they were fine.
Okay.
Yeah, I have no corrections.
All right, in that case, could we have a motion to accept the minutes?
I'll make a motion, we accept the minutes from the May 20th, 2020 zoning board of appeals meeting as written.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor will use roll call vote. John, I.
J.I.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
I thank you. Motion carries for those. All right, I think the first, next order business is continued public hearing at 799 Washington Street. And do we have a proponent for that to present? You're muted, Karen.
Karen, you're muted.
Attorney William Harvey is on the call.
Yes.
There you go.
Oh, hello.
Can everybody see me?
Yep, we can see you. Thank you.
Okay, very good. May I begin?
Please, you may, please.
Okay, thank you very much, Chairman. Good evening, board members. My name is Attorney William Harvey with a law office in Chelmsford, Mass. I represent Gulf Services, Inc., which is a Massachusetts corporation in good standing. I'm, my client is currently with me, Tony Mitri. We are present this evening to make a presentation before your board on behalf of Gulf Services, Inc. The request of a special permit for relief under, under the provisions of Section 3-E, 3 and 4, Use Regulations, 4-B, Schedule of Intensity Regulations, also known as Dimensional Requirements, Footnote, and B-K-5 Village Commercial District, to operate a self-service gas station with a repair garage, and also to construct a 1,032 square foot gas pump canopy within the required front yard setbacks. Members of the board, I'm sure that you're all well aware of 799 Washington Street. It's a pre-existing building that was constructed, that was constructed back in, excuse me, let me just, constructed back in 19, approximately 1964. So the property description is, is described as Lot 60, Map 80, Block 3. The lot area is 9,034 square feet. And as we are well aware, it's within the zoning district is the Village Commercial District. Now, the history of the property is January 14th, 1964, this was a vacant parcel that was acquired by Gulf Oil Corporation from Henry Quitty of Holliston, the town of Holliston. The property was transferred by deed to Chevron Corporation, another gas station, and then deeded to Cumberland Farms in 1986. My client in October 2012 purchased the property from Cumberland Farms, Inc. Since purchasing the property, my client began running a service station from the property. His business plan at that time was to have his brother run the property as a repair shop, inspection station, as well as other regu, other uses that were required, allowed in that district. Unfortunately, the property was not managed properly by his brother. The business was then taken over by my client. It was back taxes owed to the town, which are all paid up. And recently, we are back to request that the gas station be permitted as well as the use of a repair shop. With regards to the zoning Village Center Commercial, Commercial District, Section 3, under the zoning bylaws is the Use Regulations. Now, our request is to have a self-service gas station, which is allowed under Use Regulations, Page 25, Section 33A, Page 25. Furthermore, with regards to our request for a repair garage, that's also a permissible use under the same section, 30, 34. So with regards to the, the use that is permissible by the town of Holliston, with regards to Section V-K Village Center Commercial District, the objectives are quite plain and simple. That must be required, that must be complied with by your town. Number one, the objectives, the Village Center Commercial District's objectives are the following. Provide convenient business and professional services for Holliston residents and those passing through. Facilitate the development and maintenance of a small business, which this will be. Promote a compact pedestrian-oriented environment. Develop harmonious visual relations between the Center Village District, Center, excuse me, Village Center Commercial District and its surroundings. Currently, my client has made repairs to the building by a building permit, which I'll explain later. E, promote pedestrian and vehicular safety and convenience. I will discuss that further. Provide for mixed uses in the center of Holliston compatible with this historic village character, where residents are able to walk to shops, services, and public transportation. Now, most importantly is, number two, is the design requirements. The town of Holliston is explicit with regards to the design requirements. And we believe that we will follow all of the requirements. The following are required of all new construction or alterations in the Village Center Commercial District. Now, with regards, this is obviously not new construction. This is minor alterations, but alterations that I believe that are very significant in the fact that we're reducing, we're reducing features from this gas station that will be extremely beneficial to the town. There's no additions whatsoever to the, to this property. With regards to the first requirement, A, storage areas, exposed machinery installation, service areas, truck loading areas, and similar features shall be located out of sight from any public view. Now, with regards to the proposed plan, you'll see that all of the employee parking, if there's any storage of vehicles that need to be repaired or that were repaired, will all be located in the back of the building. They will not be seen by the general public or any flow of traffic whatsoever. And the reason for that is, number one, is it's in back of the building. And number two, is that my client proposes to take down the wooden six-foot stockade fence that's currently surrounding the area on the right-hand side and the back of the building, which is currently falling down and in disrepair, and replacing it with a brand-new wood stockade fence. Furthermore, there will be a gate, a 12-foot wide gate for the vehicles to enter and to exit. That gate will also be a stockade fence on the gate as well as, so that you won't be seeing any vehicles whatsoever. In addition, my client's providing parking on the left-hand side as well as an additional handicap space that was, was not present before. So with regards to the storiers, storage areas and exposed trucks, I believe that we will conform to that. Part B, provision shall be made for emergency vehicle access to all exterior faces of any new building. Again, there's no new building. However, this plan has been reviewed by Chief Cassidy. My client, as well as myself, had an opportunity to speak with Chief Cassidy in person, and he had no concerns. With regards to access, we are providing additional access to the right-hand side of the building. Currently, I'm not too sure if you have any photographs of the building, but on the far right-hand side of the building is a false facade of a, of a garage door that is made out of some steel and some brick and, and concrete. Now, that portion of the building on the right-hand side will be torn down. The pavement on the right-hand side of the building will also be removed and replaced with landscaping, which will enhance the community as well as the aesthetics of the building. And furthermore, if there was any reason the fire department had to get to that side of the building, it's now accessible. Part C, number C, or letter C, storm water shall be collected and disposed of without surface flows across any public sidewalk. That will be designed by the engineer. When the engineering process begins, we, we will provide a catch basin for the collection of any storm water from the roof as well as the proposed canopy, which will remain on the property. There will be absolutely no overflow onto Washington Street where there is public catch basin. D, no new parking shall be created with any required front yard. Again, this is existing building, there's no parking in the front of the building, and all parking is provided on the side. E, flashing, moving, or neon sites are not permitted. Signs must be internally lit, excuse me, signs must not be internally lit. There shall be no more than one standalone sign on a single lot. My client will abide by Section V-B exterior signs. There will be no proposed flashing, moving, or neon lights nor internally lit signs. Furthermore, we will provide any plans with regards to signs to the building commissioner. Part three, the design guidelines. Only permitted uses determined by the building inspector to comply with at least six of the following eight guidelines may be allowed without a special permit. Now, with regards to the, with regards to landscaping, again, there's absolutely no landscaping that's currently existing on the property. I recommended to my client that obviously this Village Commercial District was designed by the town for a specific purpose. And that's obviously to enhance the downtown historic buildings and to make it more historic-looking. And that's what we are attempting to propose for this board, which will dramatically change the, the look of this building as well as around, surrounding the building. And that is, number one, is providing as much landscaping as we could on such a small lot. So as you'll see in the rear, there's also, there was currently, and there probably is right now, a dumpster with a dumpster pad. That will be removed to the rear of the building. And again, there's going to be greenery in that space. There'll be pavement that will be removed, trees that will be installed in bark mulch. One moment, please. With regards to Part D, alteration of or addition to an existing structure that change all employee materials, colors, textures, as well as size, scale, and architectural features, which will show consideration of the original structure. Distinctive features, finishes in construction techniques or examples of craftsmanship that characterize a historic property shall, shall be preserved. Obviously, there is very little alteration to the existing building other than the removal of the right-hand side of the building. Prior permits have already been approved by the building commissioner, which was to replace the garage doors, which have been done. Replacement of a window that was in the front, which has been done. As well as, my client has repaired all the rot to the sills of the building with PVC. He's attempted to make the windows more of a, I'd say, non-commercial type of a window. And again, that was reviewed by the building commissioner and approved, and it's all been installed. The building does not and will not contain any type of reflecting, reflective materials, which is in the, in the bylaws. Predominant wall materials shall have appearance of wood, brick, or stone. Obviously, the building currently is made out of brick and will remain that way. All, it's going to be painted. All coatings will be in non-metallic finish. Now, I think what's most important is that the board should, should consider is the time and energy that I spent with my client and my client has spent with, speaking with people at Town Hall, the Office of Community Development, the building commissioner, as well as the fire chief. With regards to the upgrades, I'll first talk about one issue that was brought up late in the application process, which was reviewed by a traffic engineer that my client hired. And that was with regards to the, the traffic lights that were recently installed on Washington Street. Now, the, the actual location of this building being on Green Street and Washington Street is extremely inconsistent with almost, with multiple, multiple properties that were purchased by Cumberland Farms, which are corner lots. My client currently owns a gas station that he purchased from Cumberland Farms in Chelmsford, which mirror images this plan. There's a main street in Chelmsford, which is Chelmsford Street, which would reflect like Washington Street. In addition, Green Street is in Chelmsford, which would be Glen Ave. What my client did on his own in Chelmsford was when cars are coming into the gas station and need to exit onto, for instance, Washington Street, there's no left turn, which would mean it would be very dangerous for a car leaving the gas station to cross Washington Street consisting of, I think it's four lanes, and crossing over to take a left-hand turn. What will, what we're proposing is similar to what my client has in Chelmsford whereby the all vehicular access that would be going on to Washington Street would have to take a right-hand turn. So if there was a red light, possibly, and hopefully, traffic would allow somebody to leave the gas station peacefully as well as a green light. So that was the, that was what we came across with regards to the traffic study report, is to have a right turn only. Also, as I said, another major upgrade is the removal of the right facade for green space. The re, also, which I didn't mention, was in the back of the building, there's an existing storage shed in the, in the rear, which is old, it's made out of plywood and has got plenty of graffiti from, from people that was doing some vandalism when the, when the building was vacant. That building will be completely removed. And again, there's going to be a replacement of the entire wood fence around the property with a brand-new wood six-foot stockade fence. We've already discussed the storm water issue. There'll be an installation of a catch basin where all water will remain on the property. We will be compliant with Section 5-13 with regards to signage and will comply with the building inspector on all issues about signage. Again, there was no handicap parking. We are now having a handicap space. With regards to the canopy, the canopy will, will essentially provide safety to customers. Especially, obviously, we're in the Northeast. And with regards to the rain, snow, sleet, ice, where people could safely pump gas, similar to across the street, the mobile station also has a, a canopy. The canopy that we will be proposing, and I, I have photographs, obviously, of canopies that the company that builds these canopies has provided to me. But it's, it's certainly not aesthetically, I'd say, appeasing for an area such as this. What my client is proposing is with regards to the canopy, rather than having the canopy on the top, the surrounding canopy that you can see visibly from the street as a shiny white color or a shiny blue color or any other type of shiny colors that you see with a logo such as Cumberland Farms, Exxon, Gulf Services, that won't be, that won't be present. What will be present is architectural asphalt roof shingles that can be designed to be put on there so it actually looks like a roof of a, you know, like a canopy type of a structure. And I think it'll be best fitted for this area. Also, one, one issue is with regards to lighting. We'll, we'll be providing a lighting plan to the building commissioner. Currently, there is lighting over to the right-hand side of the property where there's a commercial structure on the bottom floor with apartments. We will have low-intensity lighting. Lighting will be on a time-sensitive switch where it won't be on 24 hours a day except for the purposes of some low lighting for security. In addition, this building will also have a security system, a 24-hour surveillance system installed. So with regards to the upgrades and our intense thought on attempting to appease your board, the citizens of Holliston, as well as the members at Town Hall, is to make this aesthetically appeasing to the town, considering it's still a gas station. So with, with, with all those recommendations that I've covered, if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer those. And I, I really appreciate your time and attention to this matter.
Okay, thank you very much, Attorney Harvey. I actually do, I think it's really been my biggest issue since we saw this application, is the change in the traffic pattern on Washington Street with the addition of the lights at, at both Exchange Street and Central Street since this last operated as a service station. And I wonder if you could walk through, I understand the right turn only. If you could walk through how well circulation will work within the station and, you know, entry and traffic flow through there because I think that's both the concern of this board. I know it's been the concern of the selectmen and whatnot.
Right. So essentially, we all know that this has been in a, in operation for many, many years with regards to the traffic of the town. I believe that the, that this was taken into consideration when you put the traffic lights up. And again, I understand that this is a concern. However, this is the exact same design that my client has in Chelmsford. So with regards to if you're heading down Washington Street towards the gas station, you'd obvi, obviously, take a right into the gas station. And therefore, you could exit Green Street and wait for the red light that would be on Washington Street. Or you could go down the street where there's no, there's no lights. In addition, if you're coming towards the gas station, you could pull into Green Street into the gas station. Now, that right there is where the major concern is, I believe, to the town and your board. So if you pull in, it's how do you safely access, excuse me, safely leave the gas station without having any issues of traffic flow? And that would be having to take a mandatory right and follow with regards to the traffic signals. There would be a prohibit, prohibition against taking a left because obviously that would cause prob, traffic issues, trying to cut through traffic and then going on to the other side of the street. This has worked successfully. This has worked successfully in Chelms, in, in the town of Chelmsford, where my client's from and I'm, I'm also from. And again, the street in Chelmsford is just like Washington Street, but I would say it's probably twice as busy than Washington Street. And the right turn only sign has been successful. And there hasn't been any traffic issues. And once again, that wasn't anything that was done on, that was required by my client. He did it on his own. So that would, that's obviously what our proposal is, and I think it would be something that would be done safely. And again, that was reviewed by a traffic study engineer who reviewed the plans from the town when the traffic lights were engineered. And I can only assume that while the engineers were providing the town with the, you know, the traffic engineering, that they took in consideration of the existing gas station. So the, our proposal is, is a right turn only, which I believe will satisfy safety concerns.
How about the left turn into the station if you're heading eastbound on Washington Street? There's no turning lane there.
There's a, there is a no-turning lane, correct? So therefore, traffic could not take a left. That would be illegal. It's a solid straight line.
Okay.
There would be a prohibition by the town to take a left, obviously. And that's a great point that you brought up, that I, I didn't realize about that.
So you were saying if, if you were going eastbound on Washington Street and wanted to enter, that you would have to make the left turn at the light onto Green Street and come in at the bottom of your plan there?
Yes, exactly.
And then your exit would, well, either you'd have to swing around and make a U-turn back to Green Street or onto Washington Street and then take a right.
Exactly, yes.
One other question that I think came out of the selectmen's thing is relative to delivery trucks and specifically, I would think, the large gas tankers that would come to service the, you know, fill the tanks and all. Has there been any study of the ability to make the turn radius in there? It's a little tight, I suspect.
That's a very good question. With regards to the turn radius, the, as I, again, this is a pre-existing building with a pre-existing gas station that my client managed for many, many years for Cumberland Farms. And the way it works with regards to difficult properties such as this, as well as my client's property in Chelmsford, is that there's no deliveries during the daytime. All deliveries are at nighttime and the, the delivery of the gas would enter onto, would enter onto Green Street and the truck would essentially be parked where the spaces for the four proposed parking spaces. And that's how the tanks would be fueled. So it would be at non-traffic peak hours, we'd be looking at 10 o'clock at night, 11 o'clock at night. There would be no refueling of the tanks during business hours or during peak traffic hours during the town.
Open to the board other further questions of the applicant?
This is Jay. Question for the applicant's counsel was, I know you mentioned the, the traffic circulation and we appreciate you, you know, considering that. And you also mentioned a traffic, some sort of traffic impact study or some sort of traffic study that resulted in the, the, the decision to have, for example, right turn only exiting onto Washington Street. Do you have a copy of that, that traffic opinion or those, those conclusions so that we could see through how those conclusions were, were arrived at?
Well, I do, I do not have a copy of any conclusions, however. The, the engineer did contact the town. He did speak with the, from what he told me, he spoke with the Karen Sherman. He did review all the engineering plans that were presented by the, the engineering that did the traffic survey. I spoke with him length, lengthy on the phone. And that was his conclusion to me, is that would be the best results. And again, it's, it's the same thing that my client has in Chelmsford. And I, I just believe that that's really the only approach that we could be handling this is is for that type of a traffic flow that'll work. Because we obviously couldn't, you know, the town didn't, and there's obviously no lights that we could ever install, you know, for purposes of just the gas station alone to enter into it on Washington Street. So that was the, that was the conclusion, was a right turn only for safety purposes. And again, when you're driving down Washington Street, we do have the town that put a solid white or yellow line, which would indicate that you cannot take a left-hand turn.
So I'm not disagreeing that it's not the right plan. I'm just trying to see if I can get the documentation to support that plan for file purposes or otherwise. That's all.
Okay. I could, I could provide that. I could call him and attempt to provide that to the board.
Yeah, thank you. I had that same thought. And I think if he could, you know, explicitly speak to the, all of the various traffic possibilities, both left and right from Washington Street and exiting and entering both Green Street and Washington Street, I think that would make a lot of sense to us, because I think a few of those, as you suggested, would not be safe and would not be allowable.
Right. I mean, the photograph that I have currently of the, of the existing building, which I have with me, again, it's, it's actually, it's not just a solid, you have a double, you have a double yellow line going down the street, going straight down Washington Street. In addition to that, is the town also striped it sideways at quite a width, barring any type of a left-hand turn into a gas station. So again, I think it's explicit here on the photograph and as well as what the town has done to make sure that there's absolutely no possible way of a left-hand turn into the gas station. And again, you know, I know, I understand that, you know, prior to the lights, you know, the gas station existed for several years. And again, I don't think that'll, it'll have any impact on safety, especially the way that the town has this marked out. In the town of Chelmsford, it's clearly not marked out like this at all. What they have is they have a, just a, a double yellow line like you saw on, on your plan or on the streets of Washington Street. But it certainly isn't in-depth as what you have on the plan, which shows crossed yellow marks. I would say at least a distance of six feet, indicating absolutely no possible left-hand turn. Again, you know, you know, with regards to my, my past experience and, you know, personally renovating historic properties in my own town, I was extremely impressed as a newcomer who came from 495 entering into the town of Holliston. How beautiful the historic buildings are in your town was mind-boggling to me because those are the type of buildings that I own and I renovated. And that was mine, my main emphasis before I was even talking to anybody at the Town Hall, to my own client, that when you're entering from such a historic road into a commercial district that has recently been rezoned with, with the sole purpose that it enhances the downtown area, that we had to come up with several ideas that would impress your board as well as impress the town and to clean this property up because essentially, the, the talk around the town and people that my clients talked to was this property needs to get cleaned up. Everything downtown is starting to look extremely well. It's clean and it's kept up very well. And that was the reason why we spent a lot of time on this, on what can we do to make this presentation that it's something that you'll like? Number one, it has to obviously go with regards to any type of landscaping that we could propose and enhancement of the building. So it's been a disrepair for quite a while. It doesn't look good for the town, doesn't look good for, you know, outsiders coming into your town. And we hope that the presentation that we have tonight provides for that.
Well, it's, it is a very, it's right in the center of town and it's a very big eye draw. And I don't know, I, I would feel more comfortable if I had a sense of what it will actually look like. Like I, I have the, on Google Street Maps, the, the building up. And I just, I'm trying to envision what you're saying in terms of, you know, the canopy, what it would look like. I don't know what, you know, when you say the right part of the building won't be there.
It's right on the plane.
Yeah, I see that, but, but that mean you're gonna have one bay or two bays and then what, what material is gonna be? And is it possible to get a some kind of like, like a drawing of what you envision this to look like from Washington Street? Where we're gonna have to, you know, live with this for a long time.
Yeah, I agree. We should, we should get some kind of a rendering. And Mr. Chairman, I just want to add, so I'm looking also at Google Maps and that striping, I, I have a concern, the yellow striping that's double-wide. It, the same striping is at the intersection just before, if you're heading eastbound on Green Street. So people cross that to, or go around it to get on the Green Street or cross it to go into the mobile station. If there's any way that we can get some kind of no-left turn, because once you pass the Green Street, Exchange Street intersection and say you're caught at the light and then you see that you want to go get some gas and the light turns green and you're taking an illegal, what would conceivably be an illegal left turn. I just, I see traffic issues there in that, that block between Central and Exchange to, to definitely not allow people to either use that center lane as a turn lane, as a deceleration and turn lane, or to just cross it for the, for the heck of it to get some gas on the eastbound side.
Attorney Harvey, I have one other question regarding the canopy that's proposed there. Whereas it's as close as it is to the sidewalk, what's the nature of the geometry of that as well? I think I echo Liz's concern that it, you know, we, we get an image of it, but I'm also thinking functionally, will the rain that falls on that drip off the edge of it to those walking along the sidewalk, or does it come with gutters and internal drainage? Or what, what's the nature of, of that canopy?
The, the nature is, with regards to canopies, is canopies will all have a component of a gutter system. So the water will not drip off the roof. Like the roof over at Mobile Station, there's one thing I did notice about that when I looked at it was is that there's no gutters on it and it drips off. This will be compliant with regards to the stormwater regulations, which is gutters. The guys will have a downspout and the downspout will go into a catch basin that's located within the ground of the gas station that will be maintained by the management.
All right. So are there further questions from the board?
Well, I, I guess I, in terms, so there's gonna be two bays where the auto work will be happening?
Yes.
Okay. And then what are those, well, those, it looks like right now, those are like glass doors?
Those are the, those were the garage doors that were permitted and accepted by the building department. Prior to that, there was garage doors that were obviously, there was broken glass. Those are the doors that were accepted by the town.
Right. So those will stay?
Those will stay.
No, I, I just gonna reiterate that it's like some kind of rendering to help with imagining what it actually will look like would be really helpful in terms of just when you're walking downtown.
I agree with you. That's something that we could work on with a, a design professional to put together some type of a, you know, professional rendering for you. And we could go from there. I think what's really important is I understand that your concerns is exactly what, what is this roof going to look like for the canopy? And I do have, I do have examples that I saw, one was in Tewksbury, it was a Cumberland Farms, that did have the architectural roof shingles that were on the side of the building, excuse me, the side of the canopy, which I found to be very appeasing.
Okay. Are, is there anyone in the audience who has questions of the proponent about this? Is there anyone in the audience? Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Lozaro?
Yes, thank you. Neil Lozaro, 1292 Washington Street, Holliston. I have a few questions. One is that, does it need a special permit to be operated as a gas station?
Yes, I, I think to operate in general, it, it, no matter what it's being proposed as, they require a special permit to operate, which is why applied here.
Okay. So the special permit for the gas station ran out, so he's applying for a new permit. And with that permit, is it, it needs to be like a use, a needed use of the town to get that permit or?
May, may I answer that question?
Sure, go ahead.
Sure. With regards to the permitted use, permitted use, according to the zoning bylaw use, use table, it's, it's an allowed use. With regards to the special permit, it's my understanding that with regards to the canopy, the canopy does not meet the the dimensional requirements with regards to the offset from the street. However, this board, this board, with regards to the schedule of intensity regulations footnote, Board of Appeals may authorize the reduction of the, of the yards to zero. And that's what we're seeking is a reduction from the setback of the canopy to essentially, we have 1.7 feet from the property line, which would be non-compliant. However, it's your board's power to allow that. And again, with regards to the, I've already And again, with regards to the, um, I've already reiterated with regards to the use. It's an allowable use in the town of Holliston.
It's allowable use with a special permit and that special permit is run out, correct?
There's no such thing as a special permit running out.
Okay, so the special permits for the new structure, which is the canopy.
Well, and, and the business operating there requires the special permit. Isn't allowed use. We're tasked with making sure that it meets that as well as. Any of the other zoning by law requirements for the village, uh, center. That are on there, which are. Guidelines on what the, you know, goal is and also, yeah, they do need to get a special permit to operate the business there.
Okay, and the canopy that they have in the, uh, drawing. Is that, is that in any violation with any bylaws the way it's, or they are asking for a reduction? In the setbacks?
Yeah. Yeah, let me pull up the most, uh, the, it, it is, yeah, they.
So do you want me to read it out, John?
Greater than that, I'm looking for. What they actually are.
So i- if you, I think everybody has access to the. It's Taj, Taj Engineering Plan is dated ten seventeen, two thousand nineteen, so the zoning relief requested. It's all outlined via a table. And that table is, um, right under the owner of record and legend. Section on the bottom half of that plan. So there is relief being sought. Front yard setback. Is required in the village zoning district as ten feet and they've only provided one point seven feet. And then there's a, a side yard setback that is required at fifteen feet. Um, and they're providing only per this plan eleven point nine feet, so there's three point one feet of. Side yard dimensional relief being requested, eight point three feet of front yard dimensional relief being requested.
With, with regards to the side yard relief. It's, it's a preexisting, it's a preexisting building, so therefore it's grandfathered. So we wouldn't be seeking, there's really no need for any relief sought for that because it's a preexisting structure. Um, it's not related to any type of use. Uh, with regards to the, the new structure, the new structure is related to the canopy. Now, the canopy, um, the required front setback as you, as you're aware is ten feet. And again, that's the relief that we're seeking is to provide one point seven feet.
Right, but that physical structure, which is the proposed canopy, triggers the dimensional requirements.
The canopy.
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, so if you decided not to do a canopy. You would have a preexisting nonconforming situation, but you're adding structure and therefore we're looking at this from a dimensional perspective. Yes, right?
Are you there?
Yep.
I'm sorry, um. I didn't hear what you said, it went dead for like ten seconds.
So what I'm saying is, if you were not adding your canopy. You would have a preexisting nonconforming situation, but because you're adding a physical structure in the canopy. You are requiring. To. You're requiring both a front setback and side. Yard setback relief from us.
I, I disagree. I, it's already a preexisting building as it exists.
Yeah, but not the structure.
But you're adding a canopy.
But the canopy requires.
Correct. That, that's in fact, I mean, for what it's worth, that's what is notated on your, your engineered plan.
Yeah. What's also. Um, what my client would also be willing to, to do. Is if there's an issue with regards to, um, the canopy in and of itself. Uh, my client's willing to withdraw the application for a canopy. If, if the board feels that the canopy is not in conformance with the zoning village district. Just to make things easier.
Yeah, I think, um. We're still interested in seeing the whole. Thing and, and the image of it, um, as much as anything with the canopy, we certainly comment. After that, but, uh, and then I think the. Permit is on the use as well to operate the business as, as the gas station. Which we need to.
Correct, and that, and that for what, in just for clarification purposes, both. Relevant sections of the bylaw are cited in your application, so I assume it's dimensional and use that we're looking at. Because they're both.
That's correct.
Okay.
But at the same time, um. If it makes it easier with the process, my client would be willing to withdraw. Um, any relief for a canopy and go forward with that. Um, my client, um. Again. And this is not pressuring the board whatsoever because there is no pressure. I think that, um, the, uh, Elizabeth, I'm sorry, I, I don't know what your last name is, it doesn't show it. But I think, um, Elizabeth's recommendation early on in this hearing process. I believe was the best recommendation and that is. Let's have a. Design. Of what the building will look like that may satisfy your needs as opposed to just hearing. From myself or my client that, um. Has never done any business in the town and make a, um, a visual. Of that, which might be of assistance, uh. To your board and also to provide a visual, um, of what the building would look like without a canopy.
Okay, thank you.
For the board, I don't know, I don't want to speak for the gang, but. I, I would like to see renderings both with the canopy because I think it can be aesthetically appealing and appropriate and without.
Yeah, might make sense. So, um, just to keep it flowing here, Mr. Lozaro, do you have any further questions then?
Uh, I was just, uh, the last time it was operated as a gas station was how long ago? Was it four, five, six, seven years? I'm just not sure, I, I know.
In the application, it said two thousand and twelve.
Two thousand and twelve?
And.
And so it's never been operated as a gas station since the lights have been put in downtown.
Correct.
Okay.
And, and that's our, uh, concern that both this board, I know, the selectmen have had.
So in the study that they had with the, um, traffic, uh. Engineer. What did they do for stacking? So if you're coming in, uh, west, going by the Superrat on the westbound lane. And you go to turn into that gas station. And you can't get in and then you're backed up and you're in the middle of the crosswalk and the light changes, I mean. It seems to be there's a lot of pedestrian problems.
I've lost, um, so Lozaro's, uh, audio, did? Did everyone else hear or was?
I lost him at, um, a lot of pedestrian problems.
Yeah, I, okay, I did as well.
So I guess, uh, my question was if you're on, on Route sixteen westbound, heading westbound and you pull in. And you can't get into the gas station. There'll be cars that will be backed up into the crosswalk and then the light will change. And then if you have a car enter on Green Street. It'll have two cars facing each other potentially at the gas pump, so it just seems like it's a traffic congestion at the pumps. And my fear is that. Cars will try to go around cars onto the sidewalk because there's no barrier from the sidewalk to the gas station that I know of.
Okay, um, I, I think. Very valid question, I think it, it echoes that, that the board. Brought up earlier and I think we, we would request that you provide the traffic engineers. Thoughts on all of the, the issues cited, the. One, two. I guess three potential entries, um, and exits and, you know, including those that you said. Don't work and you would, he recommends restricting, but that the others come. Uh, one other thought that hopefully he could address as he does that too is. On that westbound from Washington Street right turn into there, which would seem to be. The, the primary one, um, I have some concern with parked cars there, what? Uh, vision is for potential pedestrians walking. On that sidewalk and then the right-hand turn coming into it, if he could address that as part of his opinions. I think I'd appreciate it because I also see a. Minivan park there and somebody coming around and taking right-hand turn and never seeing the pedestrian that's walking. On the other side of that car along the sidewalk in front of Superrat. Okay. Are, are there further questions of the applicant?
I just have one more question.
Sure.
The station was always operated as a full-serve station. Now it's changing to a self-serve station. So with, with what they're proposing in the traffic problems, wouldn't it be better served? As a full-serve station where you have an attendant out there that could actually help? With, with the traffic or there'll be no one out there to help and. And guide anyone on how to enter and how not to enter. So it was, had it always been a full-serve gas station where an attendant actually was at the pumps? I believe so. I don't believe it was ever run as a self-service.
Okay, I would, uh, address that to the proponent, uh, Attorney Harvey, I don't know if you had a comment on that or?
If the board prefers. A full service, a, a full-service attendant. That's absolutely no issue whatsoever for my client to provide a full-service attendant at the, uh, at the gas pumps.
Okay.
Again, it, it, whether it's full service or self-service. It's, it's obviously, um, you know, allowed use upon the discretion of your board. But with regards to any type of, uh, full-service attendant, um, that's not an issue whatsoever.
Okay, thank you. Are there further questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wish this time to be heard in support of this application? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes it's time to be heard in opposition to it? Okay, thanks. Well, I think, um, sir, we've. I, I think we've got a few requests before we're prepared to rule on this, so I'm gonna suggest that, um. We, uh. Continue this hearing, ask you to provide the traffic engineers information as well as. Some design, some type of design, whether it be a Photoshop or a rendering, uh, that would give us a sense of. What this building in, in the downtown area looks like and particularly if there's any chance to have context. Of the, the area, that'd be great. And I guess I'd say, uh, we can. Uh, I don't know what kind of timeframe you, you would. Expect to do that, we'll continue it to whatever's appropriate. Uh, we, you know, it's, I know it's been out there, well, we don't want to delay it unnecessarily, but want to give you. Whatever time that would take to, to do that.
Certainly, um, does your, does your board meet once a month or is it twice a month?
Um, we typically meet about once a month. We now, we've been meeting about weekly for the last few, uh. Or that's because of just busy stuff, so, um, I think right now we've got. We've got a forty B going, so we've been meeting more regularly due to that.
I would suggest thirty days. I think that will give us.
Okay.
Some flexibility because time flies quick. I think thirty days will give me the time to reach out to the, uh, traffic engineer and then. Attempt to, um. Give you a visual proposal of the, the building.
Karen, do we have our July meeting scheduled? I'm not sure. I know we've got a couple this month, um.
Um, no, um, but two weeks off of the twenty-fourth would be the eighth.
Yeah, I guess, let me.
It would be possible to advertise for that, but you might want to go another week or two after that in case you do continue things from.
The other.
Twenty-fourth as well.
Sure, and, uh, given that time of year, let me pull the board to see if anybody's got. This isn't a big year for vacations, I guess, but, uh, if people have things scheduled, I, I want to coordinate with that as well. Anybody have a preference?
Yeah, I would prefer the, I, if I was, were to go away, it would be the week of July twenty-second, so I'd rather.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, either the fifteenth is totally fine with me right now.
Mark, anything on your end?
Fifteenth, uh, works.
Okay, how about if we, we go with the fifteenth then and, um.
Yes, sir.
So that works from your end, we will look for a motion to continue this hearing till the fifteenth of July.
I'll make a motion that we continue the public portion of the hearing for. The special permit application by William L. Harvey III. The property located at seven ninety-nine Washington Street. Until, sorry, uh. The meeting scheduled for July fifteenth, two thousand twenty.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor, uh, we'll do a roll call. John, hi.
Jay, hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate your, all of your.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Um, we look forward to seeing you in July and, and.
Yes, sir.
If you get that information, um, you know, prior to that, we'd love to see it ahead of time.
I will, I will definitely do that.
Productive and hopefully we'll have everything.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate all that. Okay. Let's see if I can figure out what's next on our agenda.
Bowl item so they don't get all rotten. I'm sorry.
Oops, sorry, looking at the wrong. Okay, sorry about that. Um, next on our, um. Thing is dimensional variance at one eighty-one Ashland Street, uh, Mr. Fisher. It's good to see you again and sorry we have to, but, uh, let us know what's up and.
So.
Can we present his?
Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Awesome, um, thank you and, uh, it is good seeing everybody again. I, uh. Apologize that I gotta put everybody through this one more time. Um, so if you remember a year ago, um. Uh, my wife and I, uh, well, specifically just I, but, uh, my wife and I sent forth on. Um, building a dream house, um, on Ashland Street, um, doing a pretty significant addition to what used to be a very small white branch. Um. As you will see, it was quite the task, um. But we were able to complete it, um. Within, well, less than a year. Um. So I can say that, uh, my wife and I are definitely, uh, feeling blessed, um, you know, with everything going on. We're able to, to accomplish it, um. We were able to, to accomplish it. Um, when I originally sat in front of you guys, thank you, um, you guys approved, uh, the variance. And we, I had a requested a 29 foot setback. On the front lot line. And all said and done, um, like I can say, it was probably, um, my mistake in, uh, measurements. But all said and done, the front steps coming out of the main entrance of the house came in at 28 six. Um, when my wife and I got the final plot plan, we were, um. A little bit squashed, uh, to, to see that final measurement, but. Uh, we reached out to Chris, who, uh, was, uh, with us every step of the way through the building. Um, to look at a little bit of guidance on where to go from there. And he said, to be honest with you, he goes, you guys did everything I asked. You built it to what I asked. He goes, um, just so, you know, to go back through this process and. Asked to, excuse me, um, asked to reduce it to a 28 foot, uh, setback. So. Um. I guess, you know, my, my request to the board, um, the house done to the bottom step measures 28 six. Um, in my variance application. I just, I put forth a request for, uh, 28, just to, to give that leeway. Um, I guess I should have, I should have gone for 28 from the get-go instead of 29, but. Gives me a chance to say hello again.
Yes. Congratulations on getting the house. It looks terrific.
Um, thank you.
Yeah. Jay, maybe you notice, is this something that we can make an administrative correction or do we need? Yeah.
Unfortunately, but what you could tell us is. What the second option would be and why that might be a real burden.
So we actually, um, I did sit, um, with, like I said, with Chris and, you know, kind of changing the footprint of the steps. As you'll see from that picture, thank you for, um, bringing it up. The. Um, between the structural engineer and, and working with Chris, they wanted these, I guess they call them, uh, Bigfoots. Installed to support the front steps. And with them sitting in the ground, they literally, the bottom of the Bigfoot spreads out wider. So, um, there wasn't much I could do in regards to shrinking the steps. Because of the, the size of the structural support. So then. Chris took a, another look at it with me and he goes, hey, you know. And something he goes, you know, to present an idea, it really wouldn't work so much. Would be to completely raise the, um, existing front yard. Um, a significant amount, uh, enough to eliminate the bottom step. And raise it enough that you can safely, um, step off of the top step. But to do that, you're talking no less than raising the front yard a foot. Um, and for those, uh, the pictures maybe not the best, but the front yard is level with the sidewalk right now. Um, also level with the driveway and stuff, so to raise it a foot would essentially. Create a small hill, um, or mound in the front yard. Um, it would be. Kind of a lagged undertaking. Also, if I was to raise the whole front yard. Um, it would probably mess with just the, the way that the current rainwater flows. You know, around the house, uh, you know, it would just cause it to stop. It would hit, you know, this hill, have nowhere to go. So. Um, those are the, kind of the, the two things that Chris and I had discussed. Um, not really feeling that. Either one was going to be, um, viable, but he did tell me to at least, um. You know, be forthcoming on, on some stuff. Does that help at all or?
Yeah, I, I think that makes a fairly compelling argument that that would be a financial hardship as an alternative. And, and not change anything relative to the house, at least not for the better.
Right. Well, the other thing too is my front yard, um, for those that have ever seen the property driven by kind of flows with the neighbors. Um, height-wise, so to adjust the front yard would actually, um, take me out of line with the neighbors' yards. Um, and then once again, really redoing the steps would. Would, uh, entail, you know, a lot of excavation, a lot of, you know. Uh, just a, a large undertaking.
You'd be looking down on all of them, no?
Yeah. So. Um, but yeah, like I said, I mean, uh, it's been, it's been quite, quite a, a year, um, learned a lot, um. Uh, glad to have done this, look forward to the next 30 years. Um, it, it is a commitment that my wife and I have made to. Just stick around or put the kids through the school system and stuff, and this will hopefully be our forever home and a safe place to raise our kids, so. Just want to wrap it up and get the occupancy permit and carry on.
Okay, and just one quick one. I, I think this is what I had read in what you said, but just clarify, the, um. Larger, uh. Post and, and the further extension at the steps was due to the. Requirement for the larger foundations.
So, um, what the, the existing foundation on the front of the house is still the exact same as it was. Um, prior to being built, um, we actually just went, you know, on top of and, um, beside. But if you see in that picture to the left of the staircase is the existing white foundation. So the picture on the right with the stairs going up to the house, um. When they put the Bigfoots in the ground, they actually, because of the base of them, they literally are as big as the platform. Uh, you know, that you see in front of the main entrance. And the Bigfoots literally are like touching the foundation and touching each other. So there is a lot of support under those front steps, but that's what was requested. I think you could probably park a small, uh, bus on it and not have to worry, but. It's what is the.
Okay. Any further questions from the board?
None from me. House looks great. Great job.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Anybody in the audience have questions of the applicant? Is anybody in the audience wish to be heard either in support or in opposition to this application? All right, seeing none, I guess we would. Uh, if the board's completely asked to close, uh, motion to close the hearing.
I'll make a motion. We close the. Public portion of the hearing for dimensional variance by, uh, Kenneth Fisher Jr. at 181 Ashland Street.
I'll second it.
Motion's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Everything done, we'll go to a roll call vote. Uh, John, hi.
Jay, hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
A motion carries for to none. Uh, so Mr. Do that, the. Uh, Karen, we close, we'll deliberate, uh, hopefully this evening and, and reached decision will, uh, then. Type it up and, um, just give it to the town clerk at which time you'd be notified. Uh, I think you've been through the process, so. It should be very similar, um. Although of much more limited scope, but, um, it's there. So, thank you. It was great to see you again and congratulations on. On the house. I agree with Mark. It does look great. I hope you're happy with. Things going. We'll see what we can do to get this straightened out.
Thank you guys very much and it has been a blessing.
Okay.
Have a good evening.
Thanks.
Thank you. See what else we've got. Next on the, um. Agenda is a special permit application at 750 Concord Street for Putson More. And I, I think, Peter, you're going to be presenting that, is that correct?
Good evening.
Hi.
You want me to get into it?
Sure, once again, it's, it's been a while since we saw them. I'm curious how things have gone and.
All right.
Over.
For the, for the record, Peter, my various Fletcher Tilton, uh, Jim is also at this part of the meeting, Jim Jamaranaro, Jim acquired him, his wife acquired the. The property and have been operating the miniature golf course since 2014. Um. It has been a miniature golf course before that, uh, in 2014, we get authorization for the transfer of the ownership. Uh, in some expansion of it, which is pretty much taking place out there. Uh, this was an application that had been worked on before the pandemic we started, but, uh, which is a, as you know, has a. Significant impact upon business and will for a period of time. Uh, but the idea was to add an additional amenity for, uh, uh, customers of, of the facility in the nature of a splash pad. Um, the pad itself is, is located in front of the existing. You know, building where you, where you enter the site and pay for the miniature golf course, or it's in an area that was already existing in pavement. Um, it impacts the, the handicap parking spaces that were, uh, just north of what you see is the splash pad, which is the big red box. And we have relocated the handicap spaces just north of that again, uh, with an accessway into the building. So the idea is to have that splash pad to the left of the splash pad, there's a concrete pad for a shed. And also a rinse station, uh, in an underground chamber. So the net result of the changes is that we end up losing two parking spaces. End up with 35 parking spaces. Which under the bylaw allows for 70, 70 customers and employees. Jim would be sorry to say we probably don't meet that on a regular basis. If you've all driven by the site, you can see that we don't. Come close to filling the 35 parking spaces, although that, that would be a nice thing if we ever did, so. Um, the 35 parking spaces, we, we, given the operation for the last six years, we're comfortable, we'll, we'll handle the. Continued operation even with the splash pack. So it's a special permit, uh, for an expansion of the outdoor recreational space. Um, with the exception of the splash pad and the relocation of the, of the handicap spaces. Uh, there's no other changes to the, to the existing, the, the board has, uh, as I said, issued a decision in 2014, which has conditions in the nature of hours of operation. Lighting, no loudspeaker, all those type of things, which we're not asking any change on. We're simply looking for an expansion of amenity, uh, to get a few more customers and to provide those customers there, particularly on a. On a younger level, uh, an additional amenity with the outdoor recreational facility.
Can I ask one, uh, maybe silly question? What exactly is a splash pad? I, I have sense by the name, but I'm not sure it's seen one.
You want me to take that one, Peter?
You're, you're the other guy more the operational than.
Sure, so, uh, splash pad also, it's like sprinkler park is another term for it, so. Um, basically it's, uh, you know, water that shoots up from the ground and buckets, you know, above the head and. We're going to have a frog feature where kids can run through and get sprayed. So, uh, it's chlorinated and, uh, there's no water buildup. It has a slight pitch that goes into a drain, so it functions like. A pool without a, you know, any water buildup. And, uh, they're, they're very popular. They've been put in a number of communities and, um. We just think on the hot days where people don't want to golf, it gives them another opportunity to come into our facility.
Great. Okay, um, I think I may be the only one left from when we last saw you in here, but how has it worked out for you since then?
Well, it's good. We have, um, so this business, you know, if we can operate it at a break even, we're fine. It has a special needs component to it. We have a lot of, uh, groups that intern here, you know, whether it's, uh, folks on the spectrum or Down syndrome, just learning disabilities, so. Um, and you know, we're exposed to that in our family as well, so it provides for that. It provides employment for people who might not otherwise get employment. And it also provides a, you know, a fun alternative for the, the community. It, it's going well.
Good. Okay, I'm pretty clear. Then anybody on the board have questions of the applicant?
I just have a question, uh, really for Peter. So Peter, the, um, the reduction in parking doesn't put you. Below the required parking. You were just mentioning it as a, that it will reduce parking. Is that right?
Um, it, 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 to set up where there's 35 spaces, so that allows 70 people on the site. The septic system is approved for a lot more than that, but we never have more than, than 70 at a time anyway, so I think we're compliant. Uh, with what the, the actual occupancy use is.
Okay, that's kind of what I, that's kind of my, my point. So you're reducing the parking, which reduces occupancy, which was never at capacity. You're just asking for the relief to add the amenity.
Right, and just explaining what parking we have because we are losing two spots.
Yep, okay.
And did we, I don't recall, I think we probably, um, granted it's subject to the plan. Did, did we have the 72? Uh, space there, I mean, we'll have to.
Yeah, the, the condition, um. The condition regarding the parking says sufficient parking spaces. I depicted on the plans from provided for employees and visitors. I don't see that as changing.
Okay, fine.
So certainly incorporating that, that all the previous conditions into the new decision is, is fine with us.
Okay, yeah, I think we probably would just copy them. Any further questions?
None from me. No more questions.
Is there anyone in the audience that has questions of the applicant? Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard in, either in support or in opposition to this application? All right, seeing none, um, and if the board's satisfied they have enough information, we'd welcome a motion to close this hearing.
So I'll make a motion that we close the. Public portion of the request for a special permit by Putson More for the property located at 750 Conkers Street.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
I just said, you said you moved to close the public portion, but you mean the public hearing, right?
Yeah. The public, yeah, the public portion of the hearing, but we still have to deliberate.
Okay, yeah.
Which is still public, but hearing itself. So, okay, um. There's no further discussion. All those in favor of closing the hearing will go with roll call. John, hi.
Jay, hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Okay, the hearing's been closed. We will, um. Deliberate and reach decision hopefully this evening if we can get to it and.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Aren't we supposed to be heard?
We still have another application.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm saying, did this, our whole hearing, that the specific hearing for that application was. Sorry, talk about the next.
Okay, sorry.
I have no, quite all right, I, I can understand your, um, concern. Yeah, no, we were. Closing their specific hearing on their special permit. Um, the next item on the agenda is the application for a special permit at 1490 Washington Street for Nice Wheels Incorporated. That. Sound better.
Yeah, hi, everyone.
Great. If, if you're the applicant, want to walk us through what it is you're looking for.
Yeah, so, uh, my name is Louis. Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here. Uh, so I got a. I own a wheel repair company. I shop in Locating Ashland right now. I'm looking to, uh, rent a place on, uh, the 49. That's why I'm applying for a special permit. We do a wheel repair, we fix bad wheels, curb damage, uh, we do color change, doing a powder coating, and also we do car detail.
And for this particular, um, Keith, can you kind of explain what, what it is you'd be doing? what, what it is you'll be doing to the property and where on the property be doing?
We're gonna, we're gonna do a work on cars on wheels. We do a wheel repair. We fix the curb damage on the wheels. We do, we straighten in car detail and wash the cars and buff and, you know, vacuum, regular detail in cars.
Okay. And on the, the plan that we're looking at that you've submitted, you'll be in, in which building here?
I believe it's the first building, the 49 Washington Street, the first building, I think is the building B.
Building one.
One, right?
Yes.
I think it.
And what will you, you, the, the parking spaces directly in front of that would be available for you to use? Is that the ideal?
Yeah, I believe it's going to be 29 parking space. They have a park in front of the building and on its side.
Mr. Chairman, if I could interject for a moment. I'm Robert Burr, counsel for 1490 Washington Street, the property owner.
Okay, thank you.
I'm on here this evening in a limited capacity for Mr. Porfario. I actually don't represent him or his business other than as it relates to he being a tenant of 1490 Washington Street. And I've joined this hearing later, this process late to give an opinion on the proposed parking plan based on a follow up with my conversations with your building commissioner, Chris Canny in the last 24 hours or so. So I'm happy to talk in terms of what the proposed parking plan is.
I appreciate that. So yeah, we're just trying to understand what I, I think we got a sense of what it is they're doing as business, but how it's happening is what we're trying to figure out. So thank you. Please go ahead.
Myself?
Sure, if you want to talk about it. Well, specifically the parking.
Yeah. So, yeah, nice, nice wheels here is seeking a permit under under a section three use for motor vehicle use for repair garage, auto body, soldering or welding show. What, what came of the discussion with Mr. Candy was parking. After all, this is a retail establishment. And under your special regulation, section five subsection VC off street parking sub subsection F for a service in retail area, the requirement is one parking spot per 180 square feet. As the applicant said earlier, the proposed building would be building number one, which is 5,000 square feet, which would represent more than 27, but less than 28 parking spots. As Mr. Candy said, on one of these attachments for the board here this evening. Dan American, American and Associates, our site plan engineer did not have the time to delineate exactly where these parking spots are going to be, but I know that we're on for the 24th for a different applicant. And it's my hope that as long as the usage for the permit with which Mr. Porfario proposes that we could have approval of that this evening conditioned upon a delineated parking plan prior to the issuance of the special permit. Giving Mr. American, the engineer, an opportunity to actually delineate where these 28 spots would be and then ultimately comport that into the hearing on the 24th, if at all possible.
Okay, so you say, so I mean, from the owner's perspective, the spots are available. It's just a question of delineating them?
I, yes, I, I, I believe that I could make a legal argument that there's more than enough space to accommodate parking for way beyond the usage that will be contemplated in both buildings. However, it's a sensitive issue and as an accommodation to Mr. Candy, without delaying this, we're happy to have it delineated. I just, we just need a day or two to have him do it.
Okay. Mr. Porfario, I guess just to make sure we understand the work you'll be doing on the cars will be happening inside the building or outside or both?
Inside the building.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? I'm, I'm having a hard time seeing what in, maybe because I don't have a read on the copy I have here in, in that what, what is existing and what will be new to the property? I mean, I see two proposed warehouses, a proposed septic, an existing building. And then, I mean, so can you explain like what there is now that and then what's going to?
Certainly.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think that there's two attachments. The attachment we should actually be looking at for this hearing is entitled 1490 Washington Street Sketch, which was the first one. The engineer did.
Okay.
And there's some, there's some footnotes off to the right that explains. The parking. Okay.
Can it be put up on the screen?
Uh, yeah, I think I can do that, but.
Doing that right now.
Oh, perfect. That, okay.
That makes more sense, great.
It's not the one that has Chris's remarks on the right hand side. That's the last one that says 28 spaces. I can't quite see because of the width of this. It's the, it's the previous one. It's the first one in the list of four attachments for tonight's meeting. If you force me to share the screen, you're going to really see my technology, lack of skill, but I'll try and do it.
All right, give me one second. Who's, who's requesting the screen? Attorney Burrow, is that you?
Yeah.
Okay.
You want me to try and show it? Okay.
Yeah, you can show it now.
All right. Okay. Let me see if this works. Okay, can we see? So, okay. So this was the last and I'm sorry, ma'am, I love, oh, Miss, Miss Dembitzer. Sorry if I didn't pronounce your name properly. The, if you look in front of proposed warehouse number one, you'll see in black four parking spaces and then you'll see in red with a circle around it plus six, for example. So that would be 10 spaces there. Four existing and six additional. And if I move over to the right, you will see the comment from the engineer dated May 23rd. Spaces in red show potential parking expansion of 39 additional parking spaces. And of course, this is all on upland. And the site currently contains 35 parking spaces for a total potential of 74 spaces. It's important to note for this applicant for tonight's purposes, he requires 28 and there's already 35. So as an applicant, we have enough space now, but because we're dovetailing this into the secondary application, which is not directly connected, but it's connected in, you know, larger scope here on the 24th. We want to actually show a delineated parking plan that shows the use for both buildings. So I arrived at kind of a hybrid approach, which is an approval. I don't think it's going to take to the 24th to provide a parking plan delineation to the building commissioner. So I came up with the suggestion that perhaps it could be approved conditioned on that being acceptable and presented to the building commissioner prior to the issuance of the special permit.
So in terms of orientation, where it says proposed warehouse number one, is that our applicant's future location?
Yes, it is.
Okay. And and the future second building is going to be somewhere where we're similar to the existing building that we're seeing on this plan?
Correct. It's proposed warehouse number two, but what's planned now is two different uses in that space that do not have the same level of retail component.
So there's going to be some sort of parking plan with reciprocal easement rights? Or I guess it wouldn't be reciprocal easement. It'll be a cross parking plan of some sort where they're going to be sharing all the surface parking for the two users.
Yes.
And is, it's Mark Bush or are there bay doors on these buildings?
I defer to Mr. Gressaffa. Assume so.
So those red spaces being added are in front of active doors. So if you have cars parked there and you need to get cars in and out, you've got to move those cars to get cars into the building and then put the cars back?
Yes.
But you're going to have, let's assume the maximum use of the two buildings. If there's 70 proposed parking spaces on this, is that like double or, you know, one and a half times or, you know, what, what is it relative to the actual requirements for the users here? Is that, I guess I'm asking, is that tons of parking relative to what is going to be actually used?
Yeah. I, I, I think that 28 spaces is a tremendous amount of spaces, but it isn't because that's what the bylaw calls for for a retail establishment. But two full retail would be 56 spaces and there's the potential for 74 spaces here.
So I think the reality is Mark, just between, you know, us as board members, those front spaces, if there's bay doors there, aren't going to be used.
Well, and I think particularly with this specific use, um, because I doubt you're going to need 28 spaces.
I, I tend to agree with that, Mr. Chairman. I mean, I didn't want to go down the road of.
No, I agree.
For less parking, because.
I don't, and there's no need to, but yeah, I think the concerns about.
What are the hours?
Now.
Proposed where are these? I'm trying to picture some, are the, are these existing buildings or are they truly proposed?
These are existing buildings.
Okay, that's what I thought.
And I apologize that I'm the one that has to move this around if I'm moving it around too much, but it's on my screen. So.
No, it's perfect.
The engineer does a better job with these plans than I do.
Yeah, I just have a question. Is the overall plan approved for everything? So I, you know, I, I see snow storage called out. I see landscape area called out and you're just, you're throwing parking spaces all over those areas. So were those specifically approved for those uses? The snow, snow storage and then required green space landscape area that you're just putting parking over or is this entire plan proposed at this point?
I don't have an answer to that question and I'm new to this case. Again, that's why I want the engineer to delineate this, but I've worked with Mr. American for a number of years and if he proposed three additional spots, then I would imagine on his initial site plan, he talked in terms of snow storage, only because it was kind of a luxury and not necessarily a necessity. I would find it hard to believe that he would find three additional parking spots in a place that required additional relief, but I could be wrong. I just, I don't, I doubt it.
Mark, this is Karen. Just for clarification, there is a special permit and site plan review approval by the planning board.
For, for the existing.
For the construction.
Go ahead.
The construction of the two warehouse facilities and the rehabilitation of the existing building.
Okay, but thanks, Karen. And they, and they, they approved the plan as delineated in black ink, correct?
Yeah. So that would include stormwater design, the snow storage, just thinking of the access aisles, the underlying plan.
Yeah, yeah. No, I mean, I, I conceptually don't have an issue with adding parking, but I just, I just want to make sure that, you know, there weren't specific requirements for the amount of landscaping that needed to be done. And, and now we're, we're looking to take, take those, those areas away, landscaping and snow. I don't know how important that was to them.
That's a very good point. And generally speaking, the site plan that's submitted is the site plan with which you should live with unless you're asking for relief from that. So I agree in listening to what you're saying. I think because of the overwhelming amount of possible parking, we'll be able to work around that issue and still stay within something reasonable.
Yeah, it does. You can get to 56 without touching any of those sites, but.
And that's 56 if it's too full blown retail. And again, if I ran into an issue, I would probably talk in terms more of the usage and the impracticality of, of Mr. Porfario's business having 28 cars there is highly, you know, probably. I do think we'll keep within the spirit of the bylaw, which means that the town will not be hurt in any way by having on-street parking, which is really the goal of these parking regulations.
In terms of, Mr. Porfario, in terms of the work itself, are there any kinds of chemicals, cleaners, things like that, that you would use in the process in the building?
Us, usually for powder coating, we use powder for clean cars, we use a shower soap, you know, stuff like that.
Okay.
Not, nothing aggressive.
And typically we deal with hours of operation. What are your intended hours of operation for the business?
As of right now in Ashland, it's Monday to Friday, nine to six. And I'll probably going to start opening on Saturdays. I'll say nine to two or 3:00 PM. I didn't decide yet. Yeah, but usually it's Monday to Friday, nine to six.
Okay, so this is it. Monday to Saturday, nine to six, meet your needs?
Yeah. Probably Saturday closes at two or four.
Okay, well, if we give it to you, you don't have to stay open. We'll give you the right to. So, yeah.
And what's, what's the noise level like?
It's not, it's not much noise. We just send it down the wheels. It's not much noise. We don't make much noise.
But it's all inside the building?
Oh, inside. We bring the car inside and we take the wheels, put the car on a leaf, take the wheels off the car. And then we send it grinding that they scratch. Let's say when you drive and hit the curb, then we fix the wheel, make the wheel new again. We send it down powder coating, mountain balance. We also sell tires and wheels.
I had a question about the bottom of this plan here. That, that's the, that's the rail trail behind it there. Is that right? Right next to the proposed warehouse number two? Okay, so it might not impact this discussion, but I would want to know what's proposed to make sure that people on the rail trail, you know, aren't just looking at a warehouse or if make sure there's no runoff or anything to the, to the rail trail. I guess that would be for the next discussion.
Here is the fence going up along the backside of the building.
And what kind of fence is that?
Wooden starcade fence.
That building's already there.
Yes.
That building's already there?
Yeah.
Why does it say proposed then? That's what I don't understand.
I think it's proposed maybe for the new tenant, but.
No, it was, it was, it's a proposed, it was proposed, this is the site plan that was originally used. So this is a proposed warehouse.
Oh, so that building, and how high is that fence in the back?
It's going to be an eight foot starcade fence.
I guess for, for what it's worth, I'm actually. I guess for, for what it's worth, I'm actually more interested in cleaning up the frontage part, part of that, that property. I assume, do you own both, do you own the adjacent parcel that it's, it's now a bunch of, I think it's a bunch of landscaping companies? That one has, that one's a disaster in the front, that's why I asked.
The fence guy?
Yeah, he's always selling free stuff, or, he's always free stuff in bins and, yeah.
Yeah, wood, he's trying to get rid of.
Oh, okay. I mean, to me, this, what you're proposing is an improvement to the site, your site.
Any further questions?
Yes, can I ask a question, please?
So, and so who, who is that?
Hi, this is David Franco on forty-five Summer Street, so I'm a neighbor to the property.
Okay, thank you, yeah, go right ahead, Mr. Franco.
I just wanted to ask Robert or the owner, sorry, I didn't catch your name. There's a, a note on there to install the six trees and I wanted to see what the status of that was.
I've actually, the, the guy actually next door to the land is a landscaper. And he is waiting on us to pave, and the second it gets paved, he's installing the trees, the Aphrodite's.
Yep.
Yeah.
Okay, so probably this summer or what's like?
Oh, yeah, yeah, yes, yes.
Alright, great, thank you.
No problem.
Any further questions from anybody in the audience?
Actually, this is Liz again, what about lighting, is lighting already all in there?
Yes.
And are, is there signage proposed for the new business?
I, I haven't done it yet, but I will be, yes.
Okay. I guess that
We'll, we'll have to take a look at accessory sign usage and non-acessory, Mr. Grisafa. Okay.
Yeah.
I would assume certain signs for this applicant would be allowed on the building, advertising the building. And then it would require special permits or even relief more significant than that.
Yeah, I think typically our signage by law is fairly limited in terms of the, the amount of advertising and stuff, there's additional signage that's instruction or your directional, that kind of thing is there, but it is somewhat limited, so.
Right.
May require relief if it wants to be more extensive.
So that's something for you to consider, Mr. Porfario, how you wanna advertise your business.
I mean, I'll just put a small sign, you know, whatever is a permit to do it, most of my advertising is online.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I mean, you, you have rights within the existing laws, just not very extensive. So, that's there, okay, great. Further questions? Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to be heard, either in support or opposition to this application? Okay, I think we've got it then, in that case, I would ask for a
So I'll make a motion, we close the public portion of the hearing, the special permit application made by Nice Wheels, comma, Inc. for the property located at fourteen ninety Washington Street.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion? All right, I think so, we'll vote to close this, John, I, Jay, Mark?
Hi.
Liz?
Hi.
Okay, so the the application hearing has been closed, we will debate and reach a decision on this. Deliberate, I suppose, whether it's debate or not. We deliberate, we will reach a decision that will get published and, and given to the town clerk who would then notify you, Mr. Porfario, and after that, there's a twenty-day appeal period by state regulation, after which, presuming there's no appeal, you're free to act on, on that decision. Okay.
Alright, thank you very much, everyone.
Alright, thank you, I think that's the end of our hearings and so the board members, you guys get some time to deliberate on these. We've got the special
Yep, I do.
Good, we Let's see what we've got, oh, we've got the one variance application, the seven ninety-nine Washington Street, we continued. So, the first one, I guess, when we look at the variance for one eighty-one Ashland for Mr. Fisher. Any concerns with his request and?
No, I think, I think it's clear, literal enforcement of the bylaw would create substantial detriment to him financially in, in the sense of the alternatives. I think it was, it's not perfect, obviously, cause it was a mistake, but I think it's benign, I think it's not derogation of the intent of the bylaw. And I think, you know, the alternative being so financially burdensome and awkward to the neighborhood makes it something that I'm pretty in favor, favor of.
I think all of the findings and hardships for the original requests from last year are still valid. Just slightly different dimension than we we anticipated, he anticipated.
I agree, I think it was, he acted in good faith, it was just a mistake.
Yeah, I agree, place looks great. Nicest, nicest house in, in that neighborhood now, as you drive by, so. And no one driving by at thirty-five miles an hour is gonna notice six inches.
The six inch difference then. Okay, in that case, would anybody like to propose a motion to grant the variance?
I can do it, so I'd make a motion that we grant the dimensional variance requested by Kenneth G. Fisher, Jr. For the property located at one eighty-one Ashland Street. Based on what I just relayed. And I think what we need to say is no closer than twenty-eight feet, is that the? Twenty-eight feet from the
Surveyed twenty-eight and a half, but.
Yeah, so, so we're gonna suggest that the, that the structure be no closer than twenty-eight feet from the front yard. I guess we're, we're gonna allow for the reduction of the front yard setback to twenty-eight feet, however we normally do it, I, I know I go back and forth.
Yeah, I think we can, we can mirror our last decision by change and change the
He actually did a pretty nice job in the, or somebody might have helped him, but he did a pretty good job in the questions and answers section to, you know, answering the various requirements for relief. So, I think, I think I was, I think I was clear the, the first go-around, but, you know, for those reasons, I would make that motion, so.
Been moved and seconded, any further discussion on that? We will do a roll, we'll do a roll call on this anyways, variance, John, I.
Jay, I.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Great, variance is approved. Good. Next. We have Putts and Moore and the new splash pad that requested, are you? You guys weren't around for this, I don't think was anywhere, you weren't yet on it, Mark.
Wait a minute, was it when it, when it, when it sold?
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I was around, I was around, cause I remember the, I remember it being, you know, that the charter was to, to help, you know, kids with
Yeah, they had a special
And special needs, yeah, I remember that.
Yeah, it was, it was kind of a feel-good one, but, so that's why I was curious how it has been working out for them. Any issues with the additional additional use for that, it's still completely in, in my, in my, in character with what we originally granted. It's just an expansion of the use.
No, I don't, I don't have any problem, I think it's certainly a continuation of the existing use.
Yeah.
And you know, it does, it, it's, it's it makes, it makes a ton of sense, I hope they can be successful that way.
Yeah, I hope so. And I, I think we'd probably keep all of the existing conditions, Peter indicated that was not an issue. With Just pull it up, make sure we've, we're not doing anything silly. Cause it indicated that the parking, it was just sufficient parking, there wasn't a, a specific number there. Make sure.
The way Peter described it, there wasn't, we're reducing the parking spaces by two. And the parking spaces only have to do with the number of occupants. So, so in this case, the reduction will reduce the total amount of recreational occupants at any point in time, but his point was that they don't hit that total anyway.
Yeah.
So they went from
I'm not at all concerned, I just wanna make sure when we transfer any conditions that they're actually correct. Okay, it's great to allow access to a permanent permit. No cuts out the recreational facility activities will help to provide Sorry, here's conditions.
John, the only thing that I see as confusing is number three of the previous permit that has the hours of operation for the various uses that were permitted.
Yeah, so, okay. Yeah, we didn't ask about it, but to nine P M for batting cage, well, I guess, is there any reason we wouldn't want it to be anytime that they're doing any of the other stuff, we keep with it, we just changed the batting cages for fitness, yeah, fitness workout and what do they call it? Dealt with all the noise, the lights, the Okay, seems like those conditions will still work.
I just looked at it quickly and I don't think this use is any more impactful than what we had. Right, the hours of operations remain the same. In fact, it might even be less, right, cause like, it's lit now, right?
Yeah.
So I can't imagine that they'll have the splash pad open during like the evening hours, it's kind of a day thing to get out of the, the heat, right?
But they could, I mean, any reason that they shouldn't, should we restrict that?
No, it doesn't, no, doesn't, doesn't offend me, if they did, I just don't see it really happening.
Yes, if we just say nine to nine like the, the other. I like this idea of splash pad, I got a, just almost three-year-old grandson, so he'll be just about ready to try this out. Alright.
So you want me to make the motion?
Yeah, if somebody would, that would be great.
Sure.
Actually, hold, hold on, Jay, before you do that, do we, if you look at number three, technically, hours of operation, I think the first line is supposed to say twelve A M. For the, for the golf and the snack shop. It's twelve P M is lunch, they, that only allows them to be open for a few hours a day.
Okay, yeah. Also twelve, yeah, it's open to midnight for golf. I guess we could do that timing if we wanted for the splash pad as well.
Do they have batting cages there?
He was going to put it there, they weren't there, that was part of the, you know, the last one that we approved. I don't, I need to see if they ever
Yeah, cause it said batting cages and fitness workout and that was nine A M to, I can't read it, but it seems like something P M.
Nine to nine.
The others.
For batting cages and fitness.
Okay.
Yeah, that was six thirty to twelve.
And I, six thirty A M to twelve P M for farmer's market, sounds right. But the golf and the snack shop should be until midnight, just twelve A.
And then this use would be nine to nine, I guess? Would we include this one in the nine to nine?
I'd, I'd put it in the, the nine, I think it's nine A M to twelve A M.
Night, yeah.
So they run that nine hours a day. Cause if it's a hot summer night, the kids will wanna jump.
Yeah, sure, I don't think there's any
Well, if, if parents have their kids out that late, but some do.
Yeah, and it's not near anything that's gonna be a problem. Already addressed lighting and noise, so. Okay. So we can group it in with the golf and snack shop use, golf snack shop and splash pad use.
Alright. So that, so that would would that be? Wait a minute, are we doing? We're doing a new special permit, we're not amending the old special permit, right? So you're gonna have a whole new set of conditions, alright.
Right, but
I'll make a motion then that we
Exactly the same with that one exception.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the grant of a special permit by Putts and Moore for the property located at seven fifty Concord Street. To add the recreational splash pad amenity based on that, I think this is in keeping with the bylaw. And it does not impact generally the other area businesses or butters. Even the town of Holliston and actually provides a recreational amenity to the town. And we'll, we'll track the same conditions that were in the initial special permit, with the exception of the change in hours to reflect eight thirty, eight thirty, Mark, can you cite that?
I, I, I see, and correct me if I'm wrong, if somebody has a clearer copy, but the time period nine, nine A M to twelve P M, which will change the time period nine, nine AM to twelve PM, which will change to AM for golf and, and golf users and
Right, so nine AM to twelve.
Midnight to make sure that we're.
Yeah, or just say midnight, yeah.
Midnight, there you go. So I think, I think that was, that was it. And the, and the parking will be in the findings, right? Karen, you can just say the parking, we decide the parking issue in the findings. That's not, that has nothing to do with our approval.
Yes.
Okay.
Be reduced.
Okay.
Done in accordance with the plan presented. Good.
That's my motion.
All right.
Oh, second, second it.
It's been moved in second. Any further discussion? All right, for those in favor, we'll do a roll call. John, hi.
Jay.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Motion carries permits will be granted. Thank you. One more, and that is.
Actually, John, I think we have zero birch wood also for deliberations from last time.
Sorry, sorry about that all.
Wait, good point.
Hold on, I have to get a moth that flew in here.
All right, well, do you want to finish up this, this one from tonight and then move to that or? Yeah, let's let's take a look at fourteen ninety Washington Street. Any concerns with the, the use that's been proposed?
None for me.
No, it seems appropriate to me as well. And the description of it. Nothing that jumped to mind. All right, if, if we're there, how, how's everybody feel about a condition relative to the parking that that twenty eight spaces be provided and designated on a plan to be provided for the board's approval? Or we could do it to the building inspector's approval. Is that, you okay with that, looking at that? That they're going to be able to do that without concern?
Just Karen, just one caution is that the bylaw allows for the planning board to reduce the literal number of parking spaces. It doesn't say special permit granting authority, so he may, Chris may opt to just send them back to the planning board to look at the overall parking.
Well, we're not reducing, are we? We're.
Yeah, you're reducing the, the required number. Well, well, I think Chris's concern is that the overall, so now that he's showing more than one tenant.
But isn't, isn't the, maybe I misunderstood, but even with the multiple tenants, isn't the maximum for the whole site fifty six?
I don't think, we won't know that until we know what the use is, right?
Right.
So I think what we have to do tonight, I was just thinking about this, I'm competing for physical space with my son playing Fortnite, so if you hear him. He just got, he, he just got reprimanded, but it didn't really work, so. I think tonight we have to do this based on use alone, and then we can make it subject to the parking plan being approved, because we won't know what the requirements will be until we know what the other use is.
Okay.
So it's purely a, a special permit pursuant to the use table.
But we could put a condition that a parking plan that provides the twenty eight spaces required be submitted to us.
So it would have to be a parking plan with, yeah, the twenty eight spaces submitted.
That are, you know.
But that.
Able to this applicant.
And then, well, I think we have to be a little careful because I think we want to say twenty eight spaces for this applicant, but, but parking or, or compliance of the site with related to parking, I think. Well, I guess that wouldn't matter. It would have to be. Yeah, maybe, so maybe we just cite it for this particular, yeah, use because we know it. But also subject to a approved parking plan.
Okay, yeah.
I mean, I'm not trying to overcomplicate it, but.
I agree with you, but who knows?
We can do it, we can do it, we can state the number of required parking spaces because we know what the use is. Right? So we're not creating any confusion there, but then what we don't know is we don't know how the parking is going to be laid out, and I would like to know it.
Right, and I think that can be a condition that, that it, they submit to either us or the building inspector and get approval of a plan, because that's what he's offered to do anyway. And since it's coming to the board, even since they're bringing it to the board, might as well be to us. That we can prove it.
Okay.
Expected to do that with the next applicant anyway.
Right, so it's according to him, it's going to happen anyway, so it should be pretty straightforward. But that's a condition to to issue it. Other conditions, hours of operation Monday to Saturday, nine to six.
Yeah, fine with that.
Yeah. And I guess you asked about lighting. It's all existing and it was not additional proposed, so it would make a condition so exterior lighting consistent with what's currently in place or that we're not going to create a problem, which doesn't seem like this application should. Okay, any other conditions that you can think of we need to be considering?
Nope.
Yeah, and there's no plan, there's no physical, it's just use, so. All right.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the grant of the application, for the special permit application by I just have to find the, I just flipped here. By Nice Wheels, comma, Inc. For the lot for the, the, the front building located at fourteen ninety Washington Street. The, the use is in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaws. This is an industrial zone with surrounding industrial and commercial uses. And subject to the conditions that we that we cited.
Just one quick correction, that it's the commercial zoning district.
What did I call it?
You called it industrial.
Oh, sorry, I thought, okay, so yes, the commercial zoning district. And in keeping with the surrounding uses and general commercial zoning district that, that is the surrounding area. With our conditions.
I'll second.
All right, moved and seconded. Any further discussion? And we'll move to a vote. All those in favor will do roll call. John, hi.
Jay.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Motion carries, thank you. Okay, zero birch wood. Forgot we had, yeah, got a little late that night, didn't we? Okay. This was a variance application for relief lot size, right, and
Yeah, this was the, the undersized lot in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
Off of High Crest area.
And I guess we, yeah, nobody ever made a claim otherwise, so presuming that it's nonconform because it at one time was in common ownership with an adjacent lot or something like that. It lost its, any grandfathered rights. At least nobody brought.
I think it lost its rights like two owners ago.
Yep, that's what it sounds like.
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I presume if they had the rights, they would have figured that out. All right. We had a lot of discussion about this. What are the thoughts from board members?
I have a hard time finding hardship when you bought a lot that doesn't fit a house.
I, I agree. I, I empathize with them, but I, I'm not in support of, of this. It's trying to cram way too much into a teeny tiny lot and it's is not in, in any way, shape or form in conformance with current, current bylaws, so. Lot of neighborhood opposition. I'm not, not convinced they fixed all the water issues either.
Yeah, I don't think I don't even get to the, like, the mosquitoes in the water and all that stuff. I don't even get there because to me, it's a woefully undersized lot. It's been, it's been assessed as a non-buildable lot as long as the guy's owned it. He's paying close to no taxes on it because of that. I wish that whoever counseled them in the beginning had given them better advice because it was non-buildable when he bought it. So I'm not in favor of what I would say, would say derogating from the intent of our bylaw by by allowing for a variance for this kind of lot. Doesn't make a lot of sense to me.
Okay. Yeah, I, well, you know, I'm always a hardship hound and, and I kept to agree with folks that I didn't. It, it's a self-created hardship of buying a lot that was not buildable and trying to be there. There's nothing that I'm less concerned about what they're trying to build as trying to have it meet the requirements of a, a variance application. So yeah, there's really nothing that's unique to it, right? Except that it's undersized.
Yeah, the, the only, the only thing that was interesting but not strong enough to move me was the, I think it was the woman that was the daughter of the initial developer. But my point, you know, if I were going to correspond with her was, might have been buildable back then. That's great. That was a long time ago and everything's been developed around and our zoning is changed by design. And to say that that was the original intent today is a really hard stretch for me. And it's not clearly a stretch enough to, to move me to, to be in favor for this.
By the, even if it was, and I, I don't doubt that it was, it was subdivided to create those lots, many of them were built on, others were not, but probably intended to be at some point, but fact was they weren't and you had the opportunity, you know, once it was sold is when that opportunity went away and as Mark said, maybe some better legal advice two owners ago would have helped with that, but it seems like it's happened at least once, maybe twice that somebody bought an unbuildable lot with the hope of someday building on it.
So I'll make a motion then that we deny the request for a variance by I don't have the petitioner's name in front of me, one second.
Let me just see, it's.
It's by.
Jay Cavalo.
Jay Cavalo for the property located at zero Birchwood. Based on the fact that the requirements for a variance including hardship are not satisfied.
I'll second that.
And I think Karen, if you just want to touch each element, you know, this would derogate from the intent of the bylaw.
Since this, I think we should be, yeah, pretty clear on the findings and complete because it does have the potential to be challenged, but I think the underlying message is, is pretty clear. There was no hardship, demonstrated hardship that.
We have to meet all of, so I think that you, once you miss one, you miss one, so.
Yeah.
Hard. But.
You're.
But I think we can be artful about all of them. It does derogate from the intent of the bylaw, which is to create good, you know, community planning, including lot size. The hardship is self, it's self-created because the person bought it with the knowledge that this was not a buildable lot and has been paying taxes based on the fact that it has been not a buildable lot as long as he's owned it. Detriment to the public good would be to actually allow building on the lot. What's the other element? What was this hearing date?
On Cavala, trying to find my notes.
May twentieth.
Yeah. Second.
Substantial detriment to the public good.
Yeah, I hit that one.
Yeah, I mean, I guess I, personally, I'm not sure that I be a substantial detriment, but as you said, you don't have to, you have to meet all of them, not some. I'm not sure quite how that would be for public good, but I think the other two.
No, I think I, I actually think I probably hit them all, but just not specifically, so. We, we don't see a hardship based on literal enforcement, so we've already hit that. No substantial detriment to the public good. I think it's the reverse. I think the public would be detrimentally, I mean, it would be substantially detrimented by a house being placed on this undersized lot to go in that neighborhood. And I do think that allowing for redevelopment.
We got Fortnite or something.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, then, motion's been made and seconded to deny the variance granted zero Birchwood. Anything else you need to add to that? All right, and we will vote, all those in favor of denying the request, signified by saying I, we'll call John, hi, Jay.
Hi.
Mark.
Hi.
Liz.
Hi.
Okay, it's unanimous that we will, deny that, so, thank you guys. Just switching quickly for something else, Jay and Mark, if, if you guys on that forty B, I don't know if you've had a chance to walk up, but if you want to go there, there's a cul-de-sac at the end, and there's a path that, goes right up into that site, so you could, at, at your convenience, probably be, I mean, it's used for as a walking trail now, it's like conservation land, so. And I think if you brought a plan, you have a pretty good sense of how things lay out and where it is relative to, the neighbors and some of the issues that got brought up during the last meeting, so. I did it within, a bunch of the neighbors joined us and walked and, asked some questions and whatnot, but, um.
I was planning to, because that's the only item we have next week on our agenda, I was planning to try to get there, certainly before the meeting, probably this weekend.
Yeah, that's what I just said, it's, you probably be well-served by popping out there by yourself, at least in terms of the amount of time it takes you to see the site, for instance, same here. Or Liz, we, we had a little longer. It was, it was good, it was fruitful, and people were very, appreciative of the engineer and the developer and the consultant all there.
Wear bug spray if you're going.
Yeah, that's a good thought, bring some bug spray. It's deep woods.
Okay, any other business?
I don't think so. All right, congratulations on your daughter, are you happy with that, her decision?
Yeah.
What happened with your daughter?
Oh, she graduated, actually, Mark, congratulations too.
I was going to ask, what, what's up for next year? I didn't hear for her, what's, what's she doing, Mark?
Francis is going to St. Anselm up in Manchester.
Fantastic.
Yeah, they, she, yeah, she got a nice, nice package invited into the honors college, so she's really, really excited.
That come with a ski, a season pass to ski?
No, the, I think, although I do think they have weekend vans to Sonopay, so.
And, and have they said if they're going to be in person or remote?
They actually sent out an email today that they may start as early as August ninth.
Right.
Because they, they, they want to get a jump on things and, and maybe send the kids home at Thanksgiving and, and not come back until after Christmas break.
Yeah, that's what my son's doing, they're, they're, they're going until November twentieth, and then they're going to be remote for three weeks, and then they'll come back.
And Karen, I, I didn't hear, where's your daughter going?
Mount Holyoke.
All right.
Oh.
I went to Smith, we're rivals, apparently. It's a fantastic area, I love it out there.
I worked with a woman that went to Smith, and she used to refer to her and her friends as Smithies.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know what Mount Holyoke is, you know, they have like, Holyokees or something.
Holy lions.
Okay.
How, how did, I've been feeling really bad for all the kids that kind of lost their senior year thing, how, how did they, do it, they seem to be probably better about it, and they don't know what they missed this month, but how did your kids, do with it?
So if, at, at least here, if you look over my shoulder, that, that pink bag that's hanging from the, the archway, that's my daughter's prom dress, so. She didn't get to wear that. Although, although they, they, they did, a bunch of girls got together and did a, a prom dress fire pit. So socially distanced, of course, so.
So, Chris is saying that you're still recording, and then this is going to broadcast on HCAT, so you may want to adjourn and then chat, so we can stop recording.
So you just embarrassed all your kids.
Nobody else cares, the town doesn't care.
I'm not concerned about anything.
Neither am I.
I, yeah, nobody probably needs it, so that's a good point, any, any other business?
I'll make the motion that we close the public hearing.
I'll second it.
Been moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Hi.
Yeah, hi, Mark.
Hi.
Liz. Thank you, we're adjourned, we can.